Okay, you've taken us past the 20 hours, so. We got your permission? Okay, with that, we'll call our meeting order and begin with the.
Ladies and gentlemen, certified on the United States of America, in the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. We entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of November 27th, 2018, regular meeting. Motion in support, any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Moving on to C hearings, first up, we have a public hearing to consider a request from Shiloh Shiloh Diecast Midwest LLC for a PA 198 tax exemption certificate. We'll open the hearing right now. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Before we open the hearing, let's amend our agenda to add E, our no request for purchase item six. Entertain that motion? I'll go in the seat in favor. Okay, we have an agenda amendment. All right, now we'll open our public hearing. And Eric, can you take this? Jim, you can do it. Anybody?
Leave it to the old guy. Anyway, Jim Wheeler from Greater Gracia, for those that don't know me along the lines.
You gotta go to the podium and state your name.
Oh, okay.
Address.
I can't see him.
Blood type? There you go.
Sorry about that, senior alma mater. Now I can do it.
There you go.
Jim Wheeler. Name, state, and address?
Just Greater Gracia.
Greater Gracia Development, but I have a sense of development on that. In any case, we're here representing Shiloh. We also, they are asking for a 198, which for those who know is a tax rate for industrial facilities increased to the size of the building that they're adding on. Shiloh is one of those little hidden gems that we have in town that a lot of us forget about there. Located along the south side of Superior, if you go by there, you wouldn't notice it, but a great little company and continues to grow with that from that standpoint. Joe Bowen's the plant manager of it, I know he's been there for a number of years with it at that standpoint, and also Casey Zane are with us from our office in there. And then we have a gentleman from. So just to help out along with for Shiloh to put together this. In any case, it's one that, these are the kind of deals that we're really happy to have. Companies that make big investments into it. We get part of the taxes, we go those in and in over a number of years as we go forward that will come off after 12 years and then the full taxability of it. It's one that we really use as a tool statewide and encourage expansion of an industry and one that we really recommend you to do for us. Like I say, it's one of these little nice golden companies that sit there for a number of years. I believe so, this is a job that was down in Indiana that is getting moved here to kind of make some arrangements for them and working out there for us. So sometimes even when it's the same company, we get into statewide competition. Worked well, they decided to add on to Alma Facilities, worked out very well. I want to show if you want to. They can kind of make sure.
Thank you. I guess neither. I can't. Yeah, I want to thank you guys for your support. I know we've gone through just some of the MEVC training credits in the past where we've added a number of jobs, make a total of 45, so we're trying to hit that and get the last phase of that this year. So we've grown a lot in the old facility, I really appreciate the support of the city. This is another project where, just to clarify, we are also adding into our Indiana facility, so it's kind of a mix and match, we're just moving some things into Elmo to also create even larger space for what we're doing in Indiana. So it's a win-win for our organization, I think it's a win for the city. We're going to be retaining a number of jobs that would phase out as platforms change over, but we'll also be adding a number of jobs as well that are good paying jobs and really looking forward to just finishing the project.
Any questions for the team here? How many employees will you be adding?
We're going to add five and retain five with this particular project.
Any else, questions? Well, we certainly appreciate the investment in the city and the partnership we've had over the years. We've enjoyed that very much and hope to see it continue to grow, so just keep in mind we've got more on the hand whenever you're ready. We want to work with you. Anything else? Shall we close the public hearing? So, motion support, any comments, questions, anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign, can any is closed. Next we entertain a motion for approving the application for industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for 12 years. Motion?
Support.
Motion support, anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign, the motion is carried. Next is consideration of a resolution authorizing myself to execute the PA 198 agreement of understanding between Shiloh Diecast Midwest LLC and the City of Elmo for the issuance of an industrial facilities exemption certificate.
Approval.
Motion support, any comments or questions this time? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign. It is carried. Okay, well again, thank you very much, we do appreciate it and look forward to watching the new construction.
All right, thanks very much.
When are you going to start construction, any idea?
They have broken ground at this point, we're still in the process of it. So I'm going to say it'll be done by the end of January.
Much success with this project and all the ones that are coming in the future, so.
Yes.
Okay, next we'll set a public hearing for Tuesday, January 8th, 2019 at 6:00 PM to consider the creation of an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 313 North State Street for the purposes of creating upper story apartments. Here we have motion support, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Okay, moving down to our consent agenda, we have a request for payment in the amount of $2,904.90 to White Pine Library Cooperative for the Elmo Corporate Library Annual Membership. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Request for purchase, first up, we have a request for purchase in the amount of $2,900 to Hamilton Electric Company to refurbish two.
Flight.
Flight? My English is poor. So two flight mixers at the wastewater treatment plant. And the note says refurbishment of these two motors is the most economical way of retaining this equipment in usable form, the flight mixers are 14 years old and new mixers exceed in costs of $10,000 each. We have motion, we have support, we have motion support, any comments or questions? I just have one question. These motors are 14 years old and I see they're $10,000 each to buy a new one, are the new ones not energy, more energy efficient enough that it makes sense to, have you looked at that from an angle? A lot of times I know they see with equipment, if you, it's just cheaper to get the new even though it's more expensive, the cost of operation can outweigh the savings of the additional investment.
Correct, and we are looking at it as a side issue, but these are the ones we need to replace so we can have them now rather than get the new ones in. And so the bodies are good, it's just that the whinings are bad. And so this would be the way to prevent it, and plus that we've got other, we've got like eight mixers and these are two of the eight, so we need to get the eight back.
Okay, all right, and so just so you're looking, you said you're looking at the energy efficiency.
But that will be at a much higher cost, as you mentioned, they are.
Okay, that was my question, anybody else? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Item two, request for purchase in the amount of $30,038.50 to Todd Wenzel Buick GMC of Westland, 42,019 GMC 2,500 four by four pickup for the Public Works Department. And notes states that a 14-year-old Parks truck is to be retired, another existing pickup in the fleet will be replaced the Parks truck and this new truck will be added to the fleet. Purchases through the state contract. So we'll entertain a motion, anybody comply? You were complying, okay. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign, purchase the truck. Item number three is request for purchase in the amount of $1,775 to Overhead Door of Lansing, replace two door sections, cables, clips on the perimeter seal and the perimeter seal for the Public Works Garage Building. Support, motion support, anybody have any comments or questions? Of this, I believe Matt, you said this damaged and somebody's doing it to it or something?
The door on the trucks.
Too much, although there's no insurance. Okay, anybody else?
And it was cold.
And it was cold. So actually fixing this saves us money, we didn't have to heat the outdoors. Very good. And this is, this was done in emergency basis, sorry, emergency approval, not your right company. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, same sign. Item four, request for purchase in the amount of $7,250 to Engineered Protection Systems Incorporated for security cameras for the Elmo Transit Center. And our note here says the purchase of the cameras will be reimbursed by the Michigan Department of Transportation at the end. Rogers in favor, spending somebody else's, well, our money in a different pocket, I guess, it's not somebody else's.
Right.
So I believe we had a motion in support, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign, motion is carried, and thank you, and good job for getting the grant, I guess that's going after that, always a nice way to add to your.
Do you have any security cameras out there now?
Well, there's cameras, but they're not recorded.
They know we've got that. You may want to enter some patrol in the area.
We do have cameras.
Yes, yes, there's several that we have out there. Have you guys had vandalism lately, just out of curiosity?
No.
We have.
There'll be cameras in the.
More cameras. More cameras out there.
All the buses out there are locked inside. Everything.
That's true.
Item five is request for payment in the amount of $1,748 to Veranda Roer for an Elmo Downtown Development Authority facade improvement grant for property of 408 Woodward. Entertained a motion? Motion in support, any comments or questions? They did a nice job on that building, it looks very nice, so.
And a partner is planning to go in there for sure.
All those in favor? Opposed, same sign, that is carried. Moving on to the added item number six, which is consideration of a request for purchase in the amount of $4,190.34 to IT Wright for switch replacements and upgrade fiber connectivity for City Hall wastewater department from the Works Department. There are motions supported, any comments or questions? And this is the addition to the contract.
Yeah, if you remember some of the discussion we've had about our speed and our connectivity issues with our switches being one of the keys that these were explained this all was still the thing that how much more efficient these are. And to be quite frank, if you look at the quote, it's an October 15th quote that got missed, quite frankly, and all of the transitions and stuff we've been going through here, so. Brett, who's already had his switches done out there, talks about how he's running very very fast because you've had issues here that should resolve a lot of your problems. This was part of the main switch over to start.
I'm just reading your switches, I need your switches.
Yeah, your switches, and there has to be a switch here at the server, at the server here at City Hall, and then there's a switch at all the connection points too. Continue our process towards getting this more modern and all right.
Do we have a motion on this, as we did? Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Moving on to F, recommendation on bids, we have receipt of bids for the 2019 sewer inspection services. We have most of bids received on December 5th, 2018. Top recommended bid, I guess, is from American Waste Incorporated, DBA Northern A1 Services of Kelkaska, at $1,730. And it looks like they go all the way down to Dependable Sewer, Bay City of $2,716, so a fair variety and it looks like they're fairly well spaced out and continue on, so. What is your pleasure? With the recommended bids.
Yeah.
Any additional comments or questions? Will we work with this?
Yes, they've been doing all of ours, this is that before we do the street project, they're going down through the sewer and find out where all the leads are, and so we have a better idea when we design the street properly, so we know where everything is, and they have done the last three or four.
Yeah, I thought it looked familiar, but I've always liked to ask. Hey, all those in favor? Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. We have one resolution, we have consideration of a resolution authorizing myself to execute the 2018 application for certification for the community of Elmo to be officially certified as a Tree City USA, that is she is the statement set forth by the Arbor Day Foundation. Got a motion support, any comments or questions? Anybody know how many years in a row this has been?
All lives. At least 25.
We're going to have a plaque.
Oh, there's, I could go on.
There's a stack.
I saw a cool thing, I was, I'll have to, got a picture of it somewhere, I was in another city and they had a big plaque, a bunch of years on it, and they had 30 different little stickers for the years.
That might be a better way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, make it a lot easier.
I mean, this is something to be proud of, I think they've done a nice job with that and our trees, and the trees are a huge part of our city, so.
We'll look at that as we're looking to make some changes up here.
There you go, perfect, thank you. Anybody else got comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Ordinance is consideration of a resolution adopting ordinance number 805 to amend the zoning map of the City of Elmo as it appears in section 32-32 of the ordinance of the City of Elmo. This ordinance is to rezone the property at 315 Harvard from R1 single-family residential to R2 two-family residential district, subject to the conditions set forth in the conditional rezoning agreement. And the note on this one says on the agenda, agreements number one is a conditional rezoning agreement between the City of Elmo and Elmo Blighty of Wolf Cottage LLC property owner, which details the conditions required to grant this conditional rezoning. So we've talked about this before, this is our very first conditional rezoning effort, first use of this new rule. And I think we're talking to depth, does anybody else have anything to add? Comment on this?
Just to dovetail with Eric and Saturday, it gives you a good indication if you look at the condition, how that lays out going forward, this would be a real good way to look at how the conditional document actually lays out for us.
Support?
It's a board.
Support, okay. Any other comments? And I just would like to note that this property would have been eligible because of the adjoining properties, if I'm not correct, if I remember properly, to be rezoned without the conditions. And Allen being, wanting to be the good neighbor that he wanted to be, agreed to the conditions which allows the property to be rezoned under these conditions without affecting other properties and giving them similar ability to rezon, proximity to the rezoned property. So it just, it makes things a lot simpler, it should make neighbors a lot happier, I would think, I think they grow.
Yes, yes.
And still gives Allen the ability to move forward with a very nice project, so I think it's a win-win all the way around, so. Well, knock on wood that this continues to work. Okay, anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed, same sign, it has passed.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Allen, and thank you for being the Guinea pig on Facebook.
You're welcome.
We do appreciate it, I know we slowed you down quite a bit there.
It's not a problem.
Next up is consideration of a resolution introducing ordinance number 806 to amend the zoning map of the City of Elmo as it appears in section 32-32 of the ordinances of the City of Elmo. This ordinance is to rezone property at 601 Woodward, City of Elmo, Gracia County, Michigan, from R1 single-family residential to OS office services zoning district, subject to the conditions set forth in that conditional zoning agreement. Right. This is just an introduction, all the other next. Do we give a motion?
Motion.
Motion?
Support.
Support. Okay, all those, any comments or questions here?
Yeah. Who voted for it, who voted again?
This is just, we're just saying the.
They're not voting, I'm.
We're saying the stage right now.
It's not for another two more meetings. Never mind.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. So the meeting has been set. Okay, oops, agreements. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of a conditional zoning rezoning agreement with the City of Elmo and Elmo Blighty of Wolf Cottage LLC property owners, which property owner, which conditionally rezoned property, okay, at 315 Harvard from R1 single-family residential district to R2 two-family residential district. Okay, anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Now we're done.
Not to have any signs.
Flip the page. Reports, we have five tonight, from the Planning Commission meeting minutes of November 2nd, 2018, Elmo Transit Center, November 2018 report, Elmo Police Department, November 2018 report, the building permit, November 2018 report, and code enforcement, November 2018 report. If you'd be pleased with the received. Any comments or questions, if anyone pulled anything? Hearing none, those in favor? Opposed, same sign, receiving reports. Appropriations, entertain a motion to pay. Motion support, any comments or questions on any of the listed items? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, same sign, it is carried. Okay, Commissioner comments? Mel, Mr. Cool first?
Happy to be here.
We're happy to have you here. On this very limited basis, I believe, your retirement is imminent.
Yes.
Just to remind everyone for the holidays that everyone has a pretty long season.
Just thank Shiloh, Shiloh for recognition and ho, ho, ho. Practicing.
You know, practice.
Echo.
So at one point, because I was in transit before, I don't know if Brett looked it up all the way, but it was near 6,100 riders in this last month, and that's got to be some kind of record, so I just acknowledge that, that's.
I'd like to give credit to my staff because we're down quite a few drivers and our, like Matt said, our ridership is through the roof right now, so they're working long hard hours and doing a great job, so.
Why, why is ridership up so much, any idea?
Baby, it's cold outside.
So much better than an old one?
Is it because it's cold outside?
No, compared to last year, we're up over 1,000 rides this last month, so. Why, I don't know, I don't know if it's because, you know, there is a new director and there's a lot more public, you know, I was in the paper a lot, I don't know, but I know that people are utilizing our service, so.
You understand we have an evaluation process.
Absolutely, I look forward to it.
And happy holidays to everyone.
I would echo that, happy holidays, looking forward to seeing everybody downtown on Friday night, should be a lot of fun, and thanks to Eric and everybody else that's involved in that, I'm sure there's a whole host of people again this year doing all those activities, but promises to be a lot of fun, so looking forward to that. With that, we'll open the floor up to the members of the public, if anybody would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. I guess we don't have to ask for anybody to be first, Lori, you're already on your way, so.
My name is Lori Anna, but 517 Michigan Avenue, St. Louis. I know I've been through some rough times since May. I came a long ways since May of this year. I don't recommend anybody having what I have because. Because you think of cancer being bad. Yes, it is, but there is treatment out there. And I'm the proof today of what there is treatment. I found out yesterday at an appointment, I, I found out yesterday at an appointment, I had no signs of cancer at all, and I'm in remission at this time. I only have two more weeks to go on the radiation treatments. Then the cancer doctor will put me on medication after the treatment. The doctor says I'm doing really good through this whole ordeal. I've been through, I've been through since the chemo and now what I'm going through now. It seems like, it seems, the doctor says this is saving my life. I hope, I hope, so I just have to still take one day at a time. I've been through so much since May of this year, I think, I believe I'm strong. I'm tough and I believe I am a survivor through all this. I believe, I hope, I can finish out the, finish it out. I see the light at the end of the tunnel. My, at the tunnel, my treatments are going, going good and see what happens next. I hope God, I hope, I have God on my side, I have my church family on my side. I have everybody, you, I have the Elmo Police Department, I have St. Louis Police Department. I thank you all for the prayers and support. Thank you for helping me through this, I don't know what I, I would have done if I didn't have God and the Church of Christ and everyone here. I hope there's light at the end of the tunnel. I hope that things will be better for me in the new year of 2019. Thank you for everyone for helping me going, going me good, advise on everything. I still want to let anyone know, if someone has signs of cancer, just don't give up. I tried to give up, but I didn't. I know cancer, it's not treatable. There is treatment out there. It can save a life. It did for me, I proved that I didn't give up, I went through the treatment, the treatment that saved my life. I have and I am standing, I am here standing and strong in town and for what I believe in, I'm a survivor. And for what I believe in, I'm a survivor. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on the good news, Lori. I think we're all blessed by the medical facilities and staff and doctors and nurses and everybody that's got in town to take care of us all. Who would like to be next?
Happy holidays. Tim Lambert, ten twenty-six, High New Courts, County Commissioner for District. I'll be brief. The couple of things that you've probably heard from staff or from the mayor about, or read about in the Gratchit County Herald. The septic ordinance is on hold. And just my take on, part of the problem is, you know, there were a lot of good questions that people had that the Health Department didn't have consistent answers or messaging on, you know. So, for example, people would ask things like, well, what happens if my septic system fails? You know, do I have to move out of my house? And the answer is no. You know, there are programs that can get you help. Well, you know, for some people, so, all right, so what? So, I, what does that mean, right? You know, does that, does that mean I just, I don't have to do anything? And I just have to apply for all these programs? And so, there are a lot of those types of questions. And, you know, I'm still confident that, you know, there's, there's pretty broad support for the ordinance. And I think as the Health Department gets kind of a more complete set of responses to the questions and, you know, kind of, because to me, it's, it is a, it is a significant change. And, and people need to know, right, well, you know, for example, if there's programs, you know, because there are programs, you know, that can help you, you know, if you need to get new septic, well, you know, where's the piece of paper that has those programs and guidelines for those programs? The Health Department doesn't really have that yet. So, they're kind of going to go back and, and I expect probably in February or March, we'll see, you know, a return to public hearing, there's more answers and things like that. So, I'm still hopeful that that's going to happen. Matt and Greg participated in another meeting of the, you know, the ad hoc parks boards, look at parks funding. And, you know, that seems to be moving forward, and I think there's already some opportunities there for, for some collaboration. One of the things that the county has done is we recently contracted for a provider to update our website, basically making it more user-friendly. And part of that is going to be an online parks reservation system. And one of the things that we talked about when we were going up the bids is, you know, making sure that that piece was in place. And, you know, that's one of those things that, well, if we've got a county website that's got county parks up, then why not have everybody's parks up, right? Because everybody right now is doing some form of park pavilion reservation. If you're like us, which I think you are, you know, it's done by hand. And, you know, with the new system, you know, someone would be able to go to the website. Of course, at the city's website, you can link to our website, and there's all the parks, there's all the pavilions. You click on the pavilion, you know, here's the calendar of availability. You click on another thing, and you make your deposit. And these are the types of things that it makes sense to have one of, rather than, you know, have, you know, half a dozen municipalities each trying to create some version of that of their own. So, I think regardless, you know, how we deal with the money issue, I think there's some other things that, that we'll get out of that as well. Other than that, you know, things are, things are running pretty smoothly. But, you know, do you have any questions about, you know, going on at the county level? Happening fairly efficiently, and there's more wind projects in the works.
Good comment, please, Tim. I was surprised to read, since in the last couple of weeks, that the average life of a wind turbine is twenty years. How did they start tearing them down at that point?
You know, I, I don't know. I don't know if that's legit or if that's fake news. You know, the, I think there's, there's numbers, and the twenty years probably comes from the depreciation schedule and probably comes from somebody's, you know, when you're budgeting for, you know, for, you know, just the feasibility of a program and figuring out your cash flow and your ROI. Maybe that's where that number comes from. But I don't know if that's necessarily the case for ours. You know, the other thing with, with wind is, you know, a lot of people, and this tends to come from, how they're anti-wind people. They look at some of the, the, you know, early projects that were done, and, you know, you can still find these out in California. I remember driving by one, you know, where there's these, this kind of ghost windmills, you know, with little turbines spinning around. And they're just, you know, nobody's taking it down because nobody put any money aside to, you know, to decommission them. And, you know, so people point to that and say, well, this is why windmills are bad and so on. And of course, all those things are, are accounted for in, in, you know, the new agreements, the new ordinance. And, you know, so every windmill has a decommissioning, you know, fund to set up to make sure that it can be decommissioned. But, but I don't, I don't see those things going away in twenty years. I mean, when you look at those things, I mean, they look like they last a really, really long time. It's a huge capital investment, you know, so. So, I, I think I'm not sure where that, I'm not sure where the number comes from, but I don't know if it's applicable.
Well, the machine may need some refurbishing after twenty years and...
Yeah. Right, right. Exactly, maybe, you know, there's, you know...
It would be really difficult to refurbish, you know, to put a new gearbox or something in there would not be a piece of cake. But it would certainly be less than a million and plus it took to put it out.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, that's, that's, that's where I, I like, you know, I think about that, and I, you know, I just think of like the towel that goes up. And I mean, you think that, and that's not going to wear in twenty years, you know what I mean?
The cables are going to be good, that's connecting all that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the infrastructure, I mean, there's, yeah, there's so much investment that, that's kind of out of sight, out of mind, you know. Because, you know, there's, there's cables that go from one windmill to another to another, and that eventually makes it to the grid. And, and that's a huge expense, you know, so, so there's a significant investment in this. And, you know, wind isn't going away, if anything. Some of you I know were at the township meeting a while back when Harmony Nolan was talking about consumers and kind of the long-range plans. And, and, you know, they really are moving away from, you know, the legacy giant, you know, coal-burning class one because, you know, environmentally they have issues with the others. They're just more expensive, and it's a huge upfront cost, you know, billions of dollars. You know, it's just, from an economic standpoint, it makes more sense to do things like wind because of just the nature of the investment and getting partners and stuff like that. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, Tim. But I just happened to look up, because we came in tonight, as far as the septic ordinance and whatnot. It looks like our budget for 2019 for revenue to collect from our citizens for wastewater utilities. So, for our, our basic municipal system is over two million dollars, two point three million dollars. And, you know, you talk about, I understand these folks are worried about, you know, about fee every ten years, you know, there's septic inspected and whatnot. But, I mean, that works out to like two hundred dollars for every newborn or child in the city of Elma to, you know, just take care of our own septic system and make sure we're not polluting the river that's going through our town. And right now, we're dealing with a lot of septic from something running through our river. I mean, it's a major, major problem. It's not just a major problem here, it's a major problem across the state. You know, part of the problem is that our state's representatives, Darren Lansing, have not taken the initiative and done anything to clean this mess up. It's, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. And so, I appreciate hearing that, you know, the Health Department has not given up and that they're going to move forward and try and come back with, get the answers collected. I think we've got a good crew there, and they will have answers. And I'm also very confident that if there's people living in Gratchit County that can't afford to fix their septic systems, Gratchit County is a very generous group of people. You know, the Community Foundation has done wonderful things, along with a number of other charities in the area. You know, I think there's going to be resources, there are programs you talked about. I don't know if they are, but I'm confident that the citizens will come forward and help each other out.
Yeah, it, you know, it is a, you know, some people, you know, talk about it, you know, they're opposed to it from a property rights standpoint. But, you know, really, you know, it's also a property rights standpoint for the people who are dealing with, you know...
Downstream, yes, exactly. Which is where we are, we're downstream.
Rights are being infringed upon, you know, by, by someone who has a, you know, a malfunctioning septic system or in some cases may not have a septic system, you know, because there's, there's, you know, properties on the books that we have no record of ever, you know, not only having an inspection, but ever even having a septic system installed. And, and there are, you know, there's, there's a lot of tools. I just think, you know, we probably haven't done a good job of articulating it. Because, I mean, there's everything from programs, you know, Mischta has various programs for things. But then in other communities, they've, they've essentially created a fund, which, you know, of all county grasses probably have the wherewithal to do that, where you can draw on that fund and then have it be a lien against your property and then pay it off, you know, like you would any other assessment. And we do that kind of in a similar vein for things like sidewalks or whatever, you know, you, right, you need a new sidewalk. We pay it off over time. And in theory, we could do that with our, our septic ordinance. But, but we, we didn't do all the detailed work to create that, you know. And so, we probably get the cart a little bit before the horse, I think, if we can do that. Probably one other thing I should mention, Rose will be interested in this question. She was asking me about it before. A few months ago, I attended a meeting in Midland for the U.S. Global Leadership Coalition, which is a broad-based, nonpartisan business, political leader, all kinds of groups. Basically, his purpose is to keep the United States engaged in international affairs. And they've been, they've been more active lately, just because of the world that we live in today. And, and, you know, I was invited, I think, you know, because of being a county commissioner and then having some experience in some of these issues. And, you know, we have a tremendous interest in Gratchit County and in international affairs. You know, everything from, we have got international students at Elma College to, you know, we've got, you know, metal fabrication companies that buy most of their steel from Canada, to we've got a huge project in Ithaca to be the largest soybean processing facility in the state, but whose primary export market for many of those products is China. And I actually just was asked to join the advisory board. And so, hopefully, that will help us have a bigger seat at the table, you know. There's, like I say, a broad range of people in Michigan from, from business, kind of from past political lives, you know, from every political party, you know. I think Jennifer Granholm is on the board, Spence Abraham is on the board, you know, there's, there's, the DeVosses are on the board. So, hopefully, we'll be able to keep the, the good things that happen as a result of international engagement happening, because that's problematic, as you've probably heard for some of our businesses, for, for future endeavors and so on, so.
Thank you. And I guess I, before I, I want to also thank you for, you, you and Pete Dill and W. Oost and everybody from the Parks and Rec Group for meeting with us and the various municipalities. And I think you can go somewhere with that.
I think good things are going to happen. You know, we've got time, you know, we got, we got some time. So, we, we started, I think, with, with time to get something done, which was when the bill comes up. And I'm pretty confident that, that whatever comes out, it'll be better than what we got, so.
I think so, too, so. Look forward to seeing work on that. Hey, anybody else like to come to the podium? Yeah.
Oh, I have something.
Be the other side of the camera.
Do you want me to go back?
Don't you mess it up. An update on the Elma Area Used Book Sale Group. We do this every year in order to raise money to give scholarships to people whose education has been delayed or interrupted for one reason or another. We just gave away eleven thousand five hundred dollars to thirteen Gratchit County residents.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
A lot, a lot of work went into raising that money, I'm sure. And a lot of people got books out, so it's just a double win.
And a lot of people gave us books. It's a win for them.
Yes, you know. Keep out your closets. Anybody else like to speak? Wayne?
I have been properly chastised.
Okay. I won't ask any more questions.
Thanks, Diane. Roger, I don't waste nothing.
Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Happy holidays.